Welcome everyone to the Scotland EXCEL Annual Conference 2021. It's really great to have us all together once again, even if it's virtually. I'm going to start off with some housekeeping and then I'll talk a bit about the conference overall and our speaker this moment. Into our first online event, our online annual event. So, holding this year's event online is just one of many changes to the conference that we've seen through the years. Because it's really grown and evolved to meet the needs of our members. Our very first event took place in December 2009. We had around 60 delegates from council procurement teams. And it really focused on the findings of the first procurement capability assessments, PCAs. The dreaded PCAs for those of you that have been involved. And how we can use these to increase our knowledge and skills as procurement professionals. So, it became really clear that these events are the best way we can improve our knowledge and skills. By taking the time to come together, think strategically about our sector and learn from experts and each other. I'm really proud to say that the event has grown over the years. Last year, we opened up participation to a wider audience. In particular, economic developments and partner organisations such as housing, associations and other public sector bodies. Last year's event was themed around inclusive growth and we're building on that theme this year. We're looking at some of the key areas that are top of your agenda for local and national government, your own organisations and of course for us at Scotland EXCEL. And one of the benefits of holding this event virtually is that we can all do so much more than we would be able to do with a live event. And that's why this year's event is called Procurement Week at the Academy and brings you four days of keynotes, presentations and panels. There's over 30 sessions running across the week and we have over 300 delegates attending the various sessions. We're delighted about that. So, today we're looking at climate change and how procurement can support Scotland's net zero ambitions. I am really grateful to all the speakers who have taken the time from their busy schedules to take part in the event today and throughout the week. And it is sharing your knowledge that makes these events such a success. I'm also delighted today that we will hear from some of our new build contractors, from our new build residential housing framework. And they will discuss how the framework is supporting the delivery of passive house developments across Scotland. On Wednesday, we will be looking at community wealth building, where procurement plays a central role in building sustainable local communities. Procurement is one of the five pillars of community wealth building and we are proud to be helping members to consider how they can leverage their procurement spend to deliver local benefits. And we're delighted to be working in partnership with the Scottish Government to deliver a community wealth building programme for our members. We're currently exploring this with four councils, Stirling, Clactmannenshire, Dumbreest and Galloway in Renfrewshire. And we're hoping to develop good practice that we can share more widely in the sector. Thursday is all about you and we've got a great line up of speakers who will help us to develop our skills as practitioners and leaders in procurement. And that's whether you're just starting out in the profession or you're seeking to add to your skills as an established member of our procurement community. On Friday, we end the week with an in-depth look at social care. The pandemic really brought it home to all of us how essential these services are for our communities and how we need to ensure that we can sustain their delivery. I am proud that Scotland EXCEL has been supporting councils and health and social care partnerships with care frameworks for more than 10 years. Because that takes away some of the administrative burden of commissioning and helps enable care professionals to focus on people's needs. And I haven't forgotten about Tuesday. Tomorrow, we are delighted to be taking part in the Supplier Development Programme's National Meet the Buyer, another online event. And we're looking forward to engaging virtually with suppliers. So, it's a packed week ahead and we really hope you enjoy it and find it thought provoking and that's what our conference is all about. And as always, we welcome your thoughts. The hashtag for the event is #SXLconference and I'm looking forward to reading your comments throughout the week. So, without further ado, let's get started. I am delighted to introduce our first keynote speaker, councillor Mark Flynn, convener of city development at Dundee City Council. Councillor Flynn will outline Dundee's approach to climate change and share information on the council's climate action plan. Which focuses on four strategic themes: energy, transport, waste and resilience. Welcome to our conference councillor Flynn. I'm really looking forward to hearing about Dundee's ambitious plans and I'll hand over to you. Thank you.
Thanks very much and thanks for the invitation to come along and talk about what Dundee's doing to tackle the climate crisis. Tackling the climate emergency. Clearly, we all experience, we actually know we have a climate crisis before us. So, if we move on to the next slide please. It's okay, I'll just give a bit of background to some of the context to why we're looking at the climate change activity within the city. Our roles are not much different from anyone else's really. We're trying to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, as you can see, adapting to the impact of the climate change. But Dundee, we're actually doing a team Dundee approach to net zero. We also have our own local challenges. Our population is expected to grow about 6% per annum for the next 20 years. And prior to Covid, we were experiencing increased visitor numbers to the city as our regeneration continued. An example, the VNA, third picture down on the right hand side there. The VNA visited the city, we're up by over approximately 20% on the previous year. Tourism industry is important to the city like many other places. And again, prior to Covid, our local area contributed £187 million to the local economy and supported thousands of jobs. But this increase in numbers does mean that we have greater resource use and consequently increased energy demands with more waste, more greenhouse gas emissions and greater pressures on our resilience. We also must bear in mind locally, we are one in three people in Dundee are still in fuel poverty. So, that's approximately 22,000 households are struggling to heat their homes. So, always must bear in mind and decouple our CO2 emissions from economic growth whereby we look to reduce emissions whilst still supporting sustainable growth if possible. Go to the next slide please. Again, just some background, June 2019, Dundee City Council unanimously recognised the seriousness and the accelerating environmental, social and economic challenges faced by climate change and we declared a climate emergency. To respond to this challenge, we agreed a science-based target, working towards net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2045 or sooner. And we developed a plan to develop a citywide climate action plan. This was a step up from the previous existing commitment, ambition set in 2018 where we signed the Global Covenant of Mayors for Climate and Energy. Committing the city of Dundee to reduce citywide emissions by 40% by 2030. Go to the next slide please. The Dundee Climate Action Plan was published in December 2019 and this was a culmination of collaboration led by the council and co-designing with public, private and community organisations. And it's recognised the fact that a concerted citywide effort is required to reduce emissions. It's informed by a baseline emissions inventory, as it says there, climate risk and vulnerability assessment, the statutory strategic environmental assessment and what partnership workshops and public consultation. Within the plan, we have 64 actions for more than 20 organizations under four strategic themes which are energy, waste, transport and resilience. And bottom right corner there. This represents the first set of actions in a long-term pathway to net zero and we do realise a much more ambitious national and local interventions will be required to meet our net zero target by 2045 or sooner. However, it's worth noting that Covid-19, the pandemic has changed the context, risks and opportunities for the council and partners in taking forward some of our plans, projects. We've also, like most local authorities, experienced a consequential impact on resource use and with the staffing situation. She has known what long-term impact Covid-19 will have on the ability to, for the city to meet our net zero ambitions. However, despite the challenges of Covid-19, a range of actions have been progressed and we've looked to implement as much of the plan as we can. Go to the next slide please. It's clear that we need to move at pace and that the transformational change was required and this was led to the Dundee Climate Leadership Group being established. To this provide an act of and collective leadership to Dundee's net zero challenge. This leverages expertise from across the city in order to engage and inspire collective ownership and share commitment to tackle the climate change. As you can see here, we've got a number of bullet points on the left-hand side which are strategic points, but also on the right-hand side is the important part, is the key stakeholders which are involved within the city. Go to the next slide please. Quantifying emissions and scenario plan is really difficult and really important. And having identified the initial actions from the previous plan, we are now assessing how current and future actions impact on reaching our net zero targets. This is a complex task that requires scenario modelling, accurate measurements of emissions and identifying carbon budgets for the city as a whole. We have two points here, we are trialling an innovative new software from ClimateView which quantifies emissions and the saving of different actions within the climate action plan. Users will then be able to evaluate the impact and the possible future policy scenarios and actions across different sectors. For example, is decarbonisation transport, increasing renewables and improving the energy efficiency of buildings. And Dundee is the first local authority in Scotland to trial the software and we're looking forward to demonstrating this later this year. In addition, we have SSEN, Scottish and Southern electricity networks and Dundee City Council, a partner on the Regional Energy System Optimization Planning Project. And this is to look at future asset and infrastructure scenarios within the city. Model the energy and carbon impact on the city's local electricity network and assess the role that low-carbon technologies can play in reducing emissions across different scenarios. This model has been developed over the course of the project and the council officers are being trained on going training as in to aid to inform local decision-making. So, to the first of our strategic themes, go to the next slide please. Energy, it's quite simply, reduce the consumption of energy and promote a more efficient way of getting energy from carbon-free solutions. So, go to the next slide please. Heating and lighting, homes in Dundee accounts for approximately 37% of our energy consumption. It's definitely important that the energy hierarchy continues to be delivered on the principles of reducing the need for heat, supplying heat efficiently and at a low cost to householders and using renewable and low-carbon heat. In carrying out energy efficiency measures to homes, we in councils have adopted a fabric-first approach. That ensures we have heat loss from the house, whether it be from roof, walls or floors or windows and minimise this as much as possible through insulation. Dundee has invested approximately £47 million in recent years in our external wall insulation programme with almost 5,000 residents in Dundee seeing their properties thermally upgraded. These improvements have played a significant part in creating warmer homes with reduced fuel bills for residents as well as tackling the fuel poverty crisis across the city, which continues to experience a downward trend. In turn, this helps to alleviate wider socio-economic issues, particularly for the city's low income and protected characteristic households. All these properties, you see some of the pictures there, were shown by a non-construction, non-conditional structure by the end of the programme, like in the next couple of years. All such stock will be brought up to the thermal standard and help the housing department meet the energy efficiency standard for social housing for Scotland, as just set by the Scottish Government. Going forward, when the ESH2 standards become more stringent, new technologies and methods for increasing energy efficiency of domestic stock are going to be sought and beyond fabric improvements and we need to be aware of this. Go to the next slide please. The council has its own responsibility for its own buildings and we continue to invest in decarbonising of our own non-domestic buildings portfolio over the last year or so. Through the use of our energy performance contracts, which I'm assuming you're probably all aware of. Supported by the Scottish Government through its procurement framework and consultancy support, the NPC allows the financial risk of an investment to be transferred to the contractor as they guarantee that savings will be made. Another advantage of this type of contract is the independent consultant is appointed to measure and verify the savings achieved. This exercise is completed a year after the final measures on commissioned. If the savings have not been made, then the contractor will have to take immediate action and does not get full payment until it's guaranteed. But to date, after we say that we are delighted to say that contractors so far have achieved the savings and they've guaranteed for the council. And this model has allowed the step change in the pace of installation of the energy efficiency measures within the city due to the capacity to deliver in-house. Today, two phases have been completed and 26 properties, including the highest energy users, bottom left, the ice rink and next one to it, the swimming pool, the Olympia. Both high energy consumption buildings have a range of energy efficiency measures already installed. Well-proven, including the energy efficient lighting, combined heat and power, energy efficient fans, ventilation systems, variable speed drives, PV panels. Improved building controls and improved thermal insulation. Third phase of this is currently offered procurement to 24 properties in the city, expected to be around £2.7 million. And Dundee projects are an important part of reducing our carbon footprint and the council will save 70% of the total emission reductions. If we move on to the next slide please. We also have to look at our heat networks within our properties as well. And by 2032, 35% of Scotland's homes are to be heated by low-carbon technologies. We have a strategy that sets out this vision and a good example is a recently opened sports arena. The regional performance centre, the picture in the middle, is officially opened in February 2020 and is heated by Scotland's largest ground source heat pump. Through investment from the council and the Scottish Government's Low Carbon Infrastructure Transition Fund, we constructed an onsite energy centre for the site. The development uses three ground source heat pumps supplied with water from a series of 120 boreholes which are about 200 metres deep, cycling water through the energy centre. Powered by a combined heat and power unit, these pumps supply the main sports hub building with the smaller athletics buildings through pipe work, which is connected to a low-pressure hot water and domestic heat exchange on each building. We're now looking at business cases, the map in the bottom left is what we're trying to look at as a green corridor. We will connect our waste energy plant, which goes through a number or goes past a number of our poorer quality houses within the city insulation-wise. And we're trying to get a business case to look at that from a disarming perspective. Next slide please. Renewables is vitally important for the city of Dundee. The newly formed Michelin in Scotland Innovation Park, it's a joint venture between Michelin from the old Tyve factory. We're trying to convert, well, we are converting this into a more low-energy production plant. Scottish Government, Dundee City Council and Scottish Enterprise and the Centre of Driving Innovation Investment in Sustainable Mobility and Low Carbon Energy. And we'll touch on again this on later. Go to the next slide please. Continuing on renewables, fourth and T offshore provide sectorial support with supply chain development and training across the region. Fourth ports have invested heavily within the city. And for future proof for both offshore wind and decommissioning. An example is NGN offshore wind farm starts its construction phase and will use the port of Dundee for turbine construction and marshalling. And they'll be assembled for the offshore turbines plant to commence on the fourth ports in the end of this year. This creates about 100 jobs just in that sector alone. First slide 13 please, next slide please. Continuing with renewables, we look at the Orbital O2, this is Orbital Marines Power Limited, this is a two-megawatt tidal turbine. And it was actually moved from the port of Dundee on the 22nd of April this year. This launched the matter of completion of the turbine build by Texel Fabrication within the city and the operations saw this 60 and an 80 tonne tidal turbine transfer from four ports in Dundee to Orton Islands. We'll undergo a commissioning before being connected to the European Marine Energy Centre and it will become the world's most powerful operational tidal turbine. Go to the next page please. Transport, that's the next theme on the project and encourage travel through walking, cycling and public transport and deploy as much sustainable alternatives to decarbonise our transport. So, if we move on please. Active travel is probably one of the priorities for the city. Active travel is a hierarchy and it's no surprise that cycling is the fastest growing mode of travel in Scotland. In Dundee, it's only 44% of households, sorry, have no access to a car. So, we must look at sustainable options and we made it a priority to increase journeys made by active travel, whether it be walk, cycle or bus. And to do this, we need to provide infrastructure, network and a safer streets approach. Our cycling strategy aims to increase journeys made by biking the city by promoting cycling and improving infrastructure. We have now welcomed the inbound Dundee e-bikes team, which has got 150 e-bikes, which are available to hire. Dundee is quite a hellish city, so e-bikes are obviously welcomed. We also invested in the city's first active travel hub, the picture down in the bottom right, that's our waterfront place with the active travel hub building is on the right-hand side. And it's in the heart of Dundee's waterfront, as I said, and due to be completed spring, summer of this year. And it'll be run by Angus Cycle Hub Community Interest Company, it's a non-for-profit social enterprise dedicated to supporting cycling and active travel. We're also creating more pedestrian zones and 20 mile an hour zones, making it safer and easier for people to walk and cycle. And in the first half of 2022, Dundee will implement a low-emission zone, which will simply improve their quality, be coupled to promotion of active travel improvements. Now, the travel network within this zone itself. Go to the next slide please. And Dundee is renowned, not just in Scotland or UK, but in Europe and the world for our EV commitment. And we launched our first 100% electric vehicles in the fleet back in 2011 and as fleet has grown, is one of the largest EV fleets of any local authority in the UK. And we're aiming to have our fleet of vans and cars all electric by 2023. The switched electric vehicles now seen as the council travel over 5.6 million miles on pure electric. Making a significant impact on both the air quality in the city and the carbon impact in the council's transport within the city. And it saved an estimated 280,000 tonnes of CO2. We also need to support this with the strategy of our infrastructure. In 2019, as you see in the top right, the picture showing a solar powered charging hub. This was opened and 20 charging bays and an innovative battery storage system. The hub was the first in the three in the city, site and locations to encourage commuters to charge during the day and residents to charge EV at night. Also in 2019, we embarked on a project to design and build three similar sites but on top of our three city centre multi-storey car parks. Being sustainable hubs, the central location to support wider economic interests and enabling and encouraging emission-free journeys in the city. We also continue to look at innovative ways of providing EV charging with pop-up chargers currently being trialled in the waterfront in Dundee. Go to the next slide please. Going back to the Michelin Innovation Park, I said the new park was a joint venture between Michelin, the government and Scottish Enterprise to invest in sustainable mobility and low-carbon energy. The park itself has been identified as a location to install hydrogen equipment and acquire hydrogen flow-in station for the Jive 2 bus project. This European joint initiative will see, we hope, 12 new hydrogen buses operating in Dundee with the Explore and the Gills. And we see hydrogen has been an alternative fuel with regards to saving and being a priority for carbon reduction. Go to the next slide please. Moving on to the next theme, waste. The objective is the waste hierarchy to reduce and reduce and reuse waste before waste recovery and recycling. It's quite a clear challenge and it's a very difficult challenge for the city to be completely honest. And if we move on to the next slide. So, why Dundee currently has a recycling rate of only 35% and we require to double this by 2025 to meet the national target. This is particularly challenging in the city due to the number of multi-story developments we have, as preventing contamination is very difficult on these sites. But the council, we've launched our Waste and Recycling Strategy Action Plan last year and which behaviour change campaigns are a key theme. Recognise that without the level to buy-in from households and businesses alike, collection schemes will not alone deliver the required results. Consequently, the council undertake and undertakes consistently a wide range of education, awareness raising activities and endeavours. The staff are regularly attend meetings with the community groups, residents associations, local forums, in order to provide a face-to-face information and advice. In 2018, we obtained funding to temporarily specialist recycling advisors to be appointed, knocking on doors and doing doorsteps and we met about 20,000 households. We also have an ongoing commitment and that's to ensure that waste awareness becomes an integral part of the school curriculum. With a comprehensive programme of waste education first devised in 2008 and this has been regularly delivered to schools across the city. And it links in with the EcoSchools programme. But food waste, we're not going to hide away from here, it's a particular challenge for the city. So, Zero Waste Scotland have been active in the city, working with residents, restaurants, schools to monitor the types of food wasted and possible causes. Watch shops have been carried out with local food and catering businesses to increase understanding of the solutions of food waste and introducing measures of monitoring tools to include guidance and reducing single-use items. The picture in the bottom right shows a community fridge, which is a great initiative in Dundee. Led by the Gate Church Carbon Saving Project whereby unwanted food is donated and made available free to the whole community. Thus reducing the food waste and carbon emissions whilst also making good quality fresh food available to those who need it. Go to the next slide please. Scottish Government policy is obviously to have a circular economy where goods and materials are kept and useful longer. The council, we are an ambassador for our own circular T side, a local partnership with Zero Waste Scotland, Dundee Angus Chamber of Commerce. We have about 50 businesses in this network and we continue to process the products and reduce waste. Council is mapping and ordering our own procurement and waste streams to identify areas we can be embedded in more circular principles and result in the preparation of a circular strategy. We also looking to deploy a whole life costing approach to new developments to reduce our overall carbon and minimise waste. Council have also been working with Zero Waste Scotland to establish waste and recycling baselines and measurements for future waste reduction interventions, including modelling exercise over the coming years. Our future, we actually have a reuse, sorry, reuse hubs and we repair unwanted furniture, which provides upskill and employment opportunities as well as reducing again waste and associated carbon emissions. Go to the next slide please. Resilience, well, we've got to make sure our communities are protected and we have green networks and infrastructure in place. So, I'm going to give you some examples of resilience work we've done and are planning to do over the coming years. Go to the next slide please. Thought it'd be useful to note this. We're starting off, we can't do this as a city or a city council alone, so we're starting off with Dundee's biodiversity action plan. And we agreed this at council in 2020 outlining how Dundee and its partners can protect, enhance and raise awareness of biodiversity in the city over the next decade. One of the actions of the plan is a proposal for biodiversity and natural grass areas in 27 parks and green spaces across the city. And a citywide consultation is currently ongoing. Then we have the 2019 Programme of June Restoration Works. This has been implemented with the ongoing objective to effectively manage our drainage range and provide a natural flood protection. We have chestnut pale fencing has been installed to limit access by members of the public to protect it with the aim of preventing erosion and protecting natural grasses and fragile habitat. Non-indigenous plants have been removed and new native species have been implanted to stabilise the sand dunes. We also have the Broughty Ferry Coastal Flood Protection Scheme and it's currently under construction. This is a new seawall currently under construction along with a cycleway and walkway and a combination of setback walls and floodgates. The project will take approximately two years to complete and once completed, the new seawall will reduce the risk of flooding to residential, community and business properties whilst improving and enhancing active travel along the main shoreline of Broughty Ferry. And we have the next slide please. And it'd be a miss of me not to mention we've come to the resilience, the Eden Project, which has been announced recently. And I think Eden Project Scotland slash Dundee. And if we move on to the next slide, sorry, we're still on that one, sorry. During last year, sorry, that, we'll go back again, I jumped the gun there. During last year, Eden Project, Dundee City Council and University of Dundee commenced a feasibility study for a new project in the city, Eden Project Dundee, as we see here. And as part of Eden's portfolio of international projects, which also includes developments, China, Australia, New Zealand and Costa Rica as well as the UK. Projects including Morecambe, Derry, Londonderry and Wimmer. 21st of May this year, Eden Project announced and signed a memorandum of understanding with the owners of its preferred site for the Eden Project and released the first image of how it might look. And it was quite impressive, the agreement was between Eden National Grid and SGN will kick off a period where partners will explore the practicalities of converting a former Dundee Gasworks on East Dundee Dock Street into the Eden's project home in Scotland. The site set back in Dundee waterfront and the banks of the Rotheray, good public transport links, potential for new pedestrian connection to the VIT city centre and less than a mile away from the VNA Dundee and the train station. The existing tall brick walls on the site suggested to the Eden team the potential to create wall gardens, making the striking contrast and industrial heritage of the Gaswork. Eden envisaged that this is a powerful symbol for regeneration and echoes the project's home in Cornwall, which is located in a former clay quarry. And like every Eden project in the world, Eden Project Dundee will be transformational and regenerative with an overarching theme of humanity's connection to the natural world. This naturally significant project offers us clear alignment between Dundee's ambition to tackle climate change and when Eden is known for, sustainability, education and a first-class visitor experience. Go to the next slide please. And that's me, thanks very much for giving me the opportunity to talk today and I hope you found it quite interesting and just skimmed the top of what Dundee's doing to tackle the climate change.
Thank you very much councillor Flynn. I'm sure I'm not alone in saying how impressed I am by the comprehensive approach that you're taking in Dundee. I could have listened to it all day, sadly we only had half an hour, but it was fantastic. First of all, I'm going to open up for any questions from our attendees. If not, I've got a couple anyway, but I'd really like to use this opportunity to let our attendees ask some questions. Just raise your hand if there's something you would like to ask councillor Flynn. People are very quiet, it's a Monday. Oh, hang on, we've got a question coming up in the chat, hold on a second. So, the 70% emission for heating and lighting is incredible, do you think that will change post-Covid councillor Flynn?
Yeah, Covid's caused a lot of issues and it's primarily due to the staff and resources and the capability of getting businesses involved and helping and contributing their work. Because a lot of the production line of products coming through and anything we want to do has been held up, so. production line of products coming through and anything we want to do has been held up. So the challenge will be there. But we're, we're not going to hold back from it. We like taking the challenge on in Dundee, and that's, that's the thing, we're quite bold that way. So we'll be pushing and pushing to make sure we try and meet our targets, and that's what we're aiming to do.
Excellent. And I see you've got a hand up, Bridget. Hi Bridget.
Councillor Flynn, that was an excellent presentation. Thank you very much. And I'm from Renfrewshire Council. And, and we're also, like every other council, you know, we're, we're looking at tackling the climate emergency. One of the things that comes up for us every time we talk about buying new refuse collection vehicles is why we're not buying electric, we're still buying diesel. And, and the, the key thing that our transport fleet are saying to us is that we don't currently have the infrastructure to support the electric vehicles. And I was really interested to note on your slide that you've got two very catchily named RCVs. And but the plan is that all thirty six RCVs will go electric. So have you had to build a dedicated site to support the charging of these vehicles?
Well, this slide was made, well, we actually had to, we've got another four on its way. So yes, we did. We've actually, when you get electric vehicles, you've got to have that infrastructure there. And we've been planning this since twenty ten onwards. And so our EV, our electric team are really top of what they're doing. And we've got the infrastructure to cope with what we need to do. But we're also looking at sustainable infrastructure. So if we think about putting charging points in, we've got to also work with a provider, the ENO. But we've also got to look at sustainability with regards to using PVs, battery storage and maybe feeding back into the network. And the challenges again are there, but we, we believe that changing to electric vehicles is a priority. And we made it a priority. So I said, we've got another four on the way. And but if anybody wants to, Renfrewshire, anybody else wants to come to Dundee and see what our infrastructure is like, you're more than welcome. Just please get in touch.
Thank you. And I think we'll take you up on that, but that's very helpful, lads. So thank you. Councillor Flynn, we don't have any other hands up. I've got one final question, if that's okay. I really liked the, your climate, climate leadership group. And, and the way you brought together sort of every aspect of, of the people that they would need to deal with this. Do you have any challenges in relation to that co-produced solution when you've got competing priorities? And how do you deal with that?
So far we haven't, because everyone understands what that emergency to, to address. And I think, yeah, we're going to have challenges, we're going to have the, the fact of what, I said in the slide, for example, the, the decoupling of what we're trying to do with actually having to achieve what, what our aims are. Because we've got, we've got the, the people, we've got to attract the tourists to come to the city, for example, so that the hospitality sector, so as we come out of Covid, well, we'd be looking to actually improve again, and we welcome everybody to the city. But we've got the other side of the coin, we've got to then compensate for all the resources which are then entailed in there. So we've got to make that recite, we've got to encourage people to use sustainable transport, we've got to make it say, use the train, get a bus, don't bring your car, for example, if we can. And do as much as we can. And these, these priorities for everyone is the same. And I think that's the difference with this leadership group. We're leading through their expertise, we're working with the universities, we're working with the hospitality sector, chambers of commerce, ourselves. And anyone else that's involved within that, really all come here, come to this group, recognising the need of what we have to achieve. And I think that's important, that collaborative working is really important in, in the climate action plan and also in the leadership going from there.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I don't have any other hands. I'd really like to give you a heart, heartfelt thank you councillor Flynn. I really enjoyed your presentation and based on the comments coming up, others did too. And we have our next session coming up for climate and emergency and sustainability stream. And, and that's the Scottish Procurement Climate Forum, which will run from ten AM, and we hope to see you there.